Good morning, everybody. It's February 25, 2020, 10:00 a.m., and I hereby call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. And if you would like to, please join us in, as we say, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion for adoption of today's agenda.
So, Luke, second.
Luke Headens, second. Olson.
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
Merkin, aye. I'm sorry. We all said aye. We've approved the agenda. Next, public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If there's anybody who would like to make a comment, would you please come to the microphone right now? Seeing nobody move to the microphone, I'll close public comment number one. Next, we'll have bid openings for bid replacement projects. The first one on 690th Avenue. And we have Darren Moon and Tyler Sparks here to help us through this. So, good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, gentlemen.
The first two projects are actually tied together. The Lincoln 20 project on 690th Avenue and Collins 26 on 720th Avenue.
Okay.
So, we'll do both of those at the same time.
Yes, thank you for the correction on that.
So, our first bidder is PCI. They're on their s-- if you're following along, on their second page. Bid bond is attached and signed.
PCI would be Peterson Contractors.
Peterson Contractors, excuse me. Yeah.
Okay.
Bid bond for both projects is, is our s-- are attached and signed. The bid for the first project, Lincoln 20, is $156,832.25. One five six eight three two point two five. Their bid for Collins 26 is $76,675.90. Seven six six seven five point nine zero.
And what sheet's that on? The Collins?
The C-26 project.
Oh, C-26.
Directly below it.
Right below it.
Thank you. Could you give me the number again?
It is $76,675.90.
Thank you.
They did it on it. The last project we have. Got this is for 645th. The next bidder we have is Progressive Structures out of Alcatraz, Iowa. They're on their last sheet, as you're following along.
Thank you.
Bid bond is signed and attached. Their bid proposal for Lincoln 20 is $145,892.50. One four five eight nine two point five zero. For the project C-26, Progressive Structures, bid bond is signed and attached. Their bid for the project is $76,121.15. The next bidder we have is Riley Construction out of Oshin, Iowa. Their bid bond is signed and attached for Lincoln 20. And their bid for the project is $171,593.40. One seven one five nine three point four zero. For the project C-26, their bid bond is signed and attached. Their bid for the project is $84,403.00. Eight four four zero three point zero zero. Will, do you want to add them up now?
No.
Okay.
That's it for that letting. We'll move on.
Yep, for them.
Thank you.
We'll need to total those and then come back. For the next project, your next sheet is Project P-27 on 535th Avenue. Inroads is our first bidder. They're out of Des Moines, Iowa, and their bid bond is signed and attached. Their bid for the project is $193,417.70. One nine three four one seven point seven zero. The next bidder for this project is Minats and Company out of Brooklyn, Iowa. Their bid bond is signed and attached. Their bid is $146,101.80. One four six one oh one point eight zero. That concludes that bid. It appears Brooklyn, or Minats, is the low bidder on that project. The next project we have is the LFM HG project, which is 680th Avenue, which is also tied with Project HG2 around Hickory Grove Lake. Minats is our first bidder on this project, out of Brooklyn. Bid bond is signed and attached. Their bid for Project LFM HG is $331,933.96. Three three one nine three three point nine six. Their bid bond for Project HG2 is signed and attached. Minats' bid for HG2 is $512,824. Or, excuse me, $512,800.24.
So, just to repeat that last part, eight zero zero?
Yep, eight zero zero. So, five one two eight zero zero point two four.
So, just one bidder on that project.
And their total is $844,734.20.
Could you repeat that one more time? Thank you, Tyler.
And the last project we have is Project L-I-C-21 on 640th Avenue. The first bidder we have for this is Gerkey Incorporated out of Eldora, Iowa. Their bid bond is signed and attached.
Could I just clarify? You said, did you say 640th, 645th on my sheet here?
Yeah, 645th is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I thought I heard the same thing.
And Gerkey, Gerkey's bid is $66,000.08. So, six six zero 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 point eight zero. Riley Construction, which is on your last sheet, is our next bidder. Their bid bond is signed and attached. And Riley's bid is $60,778.50. Six zero seven seven eight point five zero. Our next bidder is Progressive Structures. They're on the last sheet as well, out of Alcatraz, Iowa. Their bid bond is signed and attached. Progressive's bid is $61,707.10. Six one seven zero seven point one zero. And then our last bidder for this project is Peterson Contractors. Their bid bond is signed and attached. And Peterson Contractors' bid is $58,679.62. Five eight six seven nine point six two. And it appears Peterson was the low bidder on that project.
Prices look good on all these, so I don't see issues with that. So, we will double-check the numbers and then bring it back to you next week for boarding of the contract.
Okay. Thanks. Prices do look very good. Thank you very much for your work, and we'll see you next week on it. Okay. Next, we will move on to, we just went through items five through eight, so now to agenda item nine, agency reports. I don't believe we have any today. And consideration of minutes, we'll have those minutes next week. Consideration of personnel actions, before we, I would entertain a motion, I have been notified of a correction. Under Wendy Schmitz, it says 1,860 per hour. It should read 1,960 per hour, and that's because of supplemental wages that she receives through, through some training. And I was notified of that yesterday. So, I would entertain a motion with the correction that her wage should be at 1,960 per hour. And Alyssa, you can confirm that, right? Okay.
Yeah. I'll still move with that, with the correction.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, Olson?
Aye.
Headens.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Motion, Carrie. And I have nothing changed on the consent agenda. Does anybody need to pull an item for discussion? If not, I entertain a motion for consent agenda.
So, Luke has presented.
Second. Okay. Discussion? No. Olson?
Headens.
I'm sorry. I looked at you and I said Olson. Headens, aye. Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Okay, that's approved. Problem hearing items, we have none. Additional items, Alyssa Wigle for a discussion and consideration of requests by Wayne Selly for repayment options. Good morning, Alyssa.
Good morning. Good morning. So, this was an agenda item a couple of weeks ago. If you remember, we had a deputy sheriff that resigned within a year of starting with the county, and, and we had an agreement with him that if he left, there would be repayment of ILEA expenses, wages, and different things. So, he did send a request to the Board of Supervisors for different payment options. After the board meeting a couple of weeks ago, we did, the county attorney, assistant county attorney, captain, and the sheriff and I met, and, and you will see a memo from the sheriff regarding this, this issue. What I would like to point out is Wayne Selly's letter does have a total of 8746, and the sheriff's letter has 8539. What's not included in the sheriff's is the deputy uniforms. They do get those back from the individual when they leave, so we don't recoup payment on those from any other employees. And then one thing, the pit certification was 225, not 125, which was an error on, on my part when I sent that letter out to Wayne. So, that's why those two amounts don't add up.
So, we are, if, one of the options would be to consider accepting an amount under.
Correct.
And that would be the $8,539 in the sheriff's.
Yeah. Those would be the expenses that the county paid to send this deputy to the academy. So, it doesn't include wages, but it does include the tuition and all the other expenses associated with that, that training.
Alyssa, did you check through other jurisdictions?
I did. It varies across other jurisdictions. There are a couple that, that put in the agreement the wages. There are some that just collect the ILEA, and there are other agencies that don't, don't do an agreement with their individual. We did look at the code section. The wages do come in. If you look at decertification of a police officer, that, it spells out what needs to be in an agreement, and it has to be prior to sending. And it says wages while they attend the academy. So, that's why it wasn't in our agreement. It wasn't just something that was placed in there. It was if you wanted to, for some reason, go after, you know, do a decertification of that officer. There was some pretty specific pieces in, in Iowa Code 501 that state that.
And decertification is indicative only of that person representing a particular unit as?
No, I think it's their police office, it's their certification.
So, be decertification of also their ILEA training?
That's my understanding, is if we're going to decertify. I know with Connie, yeah. There are different things in the code section that says where you can go after.
Okay.
Decertification. There's other, you know, there's, if they commit a crime. I mean, and there's other things, but this was, this was spelled out in Chapter Six. It's the decertification of a police officer.
We are not asking for decertification.
No, absolutely not. Correct? Nope.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we didn't end up doing something that took away his ability to work.
In the agreement, in the agreement, it does say if, if the individual doesn't repay, that the county, I mean, that could happen, so. And that's from the code section, so. But no, we are not going through that process.
Okay.
Absolutely not.
So, the 8539 is the amount that we should be looking at rather than the 8746?
You know, the deputy uniforms of, I mean, they do get those back. The sheriff's office, they return, when an employee leaves, they turn in their uniforms. So, we, my understanding is they do have those back.
Okay. So, looking at the back of the room again, at Connie, back there, the sheriff's department administrative supervisor?
Supervisor. Is that? Manager. This one's flashing. I don't know how I'm going to have you talking to this.
Just so you know, when people turn in their uniforms, they go back in the uniform room. If we have deputies that need a uniform and they happen to fit into those, they will take those uniforms and continue to use them. Or, as we get reserve deputies, if reserve deputies will fit into that particular uniform, we do utilize those uniforms again. We don't just throw them away.
Okay. So, their county sheriff's department?
Yes.
Department property?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. I thought maybe they were the ones stored across the street or wherever that was, but okay, so, okay. All right, thank you. My, my feeling about this, I think I may have, thanks Connie, I may have expressed this last time, was that I'm uncomfortable on the wages, you know, trying to collect on the wages. So, I haven't changed my mind about that, the, you know. We were getting some good out of that, et cetera. So, I guess now, looking at the 8539, I think the other time, thing I said two weeks ago I felt pretty strongly about was I did not want to drain someone's bank account when they were unemployed. That just, to me, felt uncomfortable. So, I had asked about, you know, the possibility, I'd asked the county attorney about the possibility of what we could do for some kind of repayment arrangement that carried more weight than the normal, just, we're going to put you on a payment plan. Has anybody heard back from the county attorney's office on that?
No. And, and, and doing the research of these other agreements, there are repayment plans built into some of the other cities and counties, and they charge interest. You know, it's whatever the board wants to do. My recommendation would be to do the one lump sum instead of setting up monthly payments, but that is, that is whatever the board wishes to consider. I think in Mr. Selly's letter, he, he could not pay the whole amount back in a lump sum, so he requested a monthly payment plan. But he did offer the reduced, just for the ILEA expenses.
Right. And yes, that was everything in his savings.
That, that's what he noted in his letter.
That's what he noted.
Yep.
So, I guess, along with, if, if we were to consider something that were more than one payment, more than the lump sum, would be requesting a hefty down payment, if you will, on any contract that would carry out with more than one payment on this.
Yeah. We don't know. I was just looking at this letter, and it just references, gives you option to just go with the reduced amount, except versus the whole of the salary in there, that he paid from his savings. Doesn't say that he put it, that my savings concluded.
Uh huh.
Yeah. The question then is, is what if you don't have future payments from him? And then do you have to take some other type of legal recourse? And that could be more problematic for the individual potentially.
If, I, I do wish there was somebody from the county attorney's office here today, because my next question would have been, but I don't know what the dollar amount is for small claims court anymore. So, when you're talking about if we have to go after an amount?
The 8,700 would fall, my understanding, it's less than 25, I think it's 25,000.
Thank you.
But I know the full amount was, would be, not small claims.
Would, yeah, but, so anything, anything under the full amount?
And I'm not, I'm not an attorney, so.
Yeah, I know. I just, I guess we could Google it.
Yeah.
Right, so, right, well, but, so that would be my thought, that our reclamation process would be the same whether we don't accept his offer, but we say you only owe the 8539, but we're just one lump sum, and if he doesn't pay it, we're in the same, same process situation that we would be if we took a partial payment and then put out for a repayment plan with maybe minimum payment, like $50 a month or something, while he is not working and increasing that amount then substantially once he is working.
He signed a contract for what would be the entire amount, and he is now saying he would be willing to do this. I think personally, it's better to get it taken care of than have it be a continuing, ongoing thing where we'd have to go back, spend staff time, possibly attorney time, going back again and again to get, to get something done. I think it's a good idea to just get it taken care of and to basically accept his offer to pay that much now.
I think too, if they, if you accept the 8,500, there would be some, I would ask the board to allow me to draft a release and satisfaction so that individual would know that this debt is paid for. I, I think the individual, I can't speak for the individual, but that would give him some, you know, able to move on and, and from this and not have this debt hanging over his head for years.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Would the board be open to a lump sum payment that was less than the 85? As, I think another thing I said before, a couple of weeks ago, I've been laid off. I mean, well, this is not a layoff, it's a voluntary quit, but I've, I've, I've struggled in between, you know, jobs before, and we do happen to know in this situation, since this is the sheriff's son-in-law, that, that there is, there's children involved, and I just hate to do this to anybody.
One, one thing I remember.
And not leave them anything in their bank.
One thing that I would notice is that's in the letter. We did not, I mean, there's no way for us to verify that, Loris, so.
About how much money's in there?
Correct. Understand that that's drafted in the letter, but, but there, there was nothing. I mean, we don't, we don't have a form that they sign out saying this is, that we look at this. So, while it was put in the letter, there is no way for us to go and check to verify that that's factual. So, I'm not saying it's not. I'm just saying, I think we need to look at, at the issue and what the offer was and make the best decision from there.
And I just want to make it clear that I would do this for anybody.
Okay.
Based upon my own personal history of not having a lot of money, you know, during, during a period of unemployment, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I appreciate your comment. I think since we originally didn't have the full amount, including the salary, certainly that it was Selly's suggestion of just paying back the ILEA cost, and actually, this is going to be a couple hundred less than what this letter has stated. I do think just paying off a lump sum, reading that letter of satisfaction, probably the. I do think just paying off a lump sum, giving that letter of satisfaction from there, so we just have debt, obviously his debt hanging over him, I think that would probably be comforting to know what that is, you know, debt and over what, can move on and forward. That would be, or I would be more inclined to go check.
Okay.
Are we ready for motion? Further discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I would make the motion that we had Mr. Sully pay the eight-month sum, that's eight thousand five hundred and thirty million dollars a month that is completed, that we directly was given to provide Mr. Sully with a letter of debt traction for the payment in debt.
I'm going to let Linda second it.
I will second it. Any further discussion?
Edens?
Hi.
Olson?
Nay.
Merk and I, motion carries. Okay. Thank you, Elizabeth, for your work on this. Anything else?
Nope, I think that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then we will move on to department reports.
I'm up.
You're up. Joe Quaker, and it's RVM now, not IRVM, is that correct?
RVM.
RVM, okay. Explain that to us, if you would.
So longer integrated?
I am.
That's right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm having a little trouble hearing today, the last couple of days, I got something going on, so if you have some questions, just, you can just yell at me, I'm used to it. So, the last time we met was November nineteenth, I believe, so that would have been fall mode. And that's where we started in my report, drainage ditch grant thirteen, which is over by I-35, along the side, on the east side. So Allison and I and Tanner and Tyler spent all the way through about New Year's cutting away. And if you ever drive that two-hundred-and-sixty-fifth, you'll see all the brush piles, so. We didn't quite get done with that. I think we did about twelve thousand dollars worth of brush work, and we only levied about ten, so we'll have to go back and, and re-levy that project and finish it up, so, but we made a lot of progress. With that, we switched gears, or Tyler did, to burning brush piles. And so, I say that, it kind of rolls off the tongue, but I did get a question the other day, like, why are you burning the brush piles? So it kind of makes sense to me, but if you don't, not used to process, for those that might not know, so when we go in and do some logging along an open ditch to clear some of the trees, you know, you have an option of hauling it away somewhere, which takes money and fuel. You can bury it, which EPA doesn't allow in a lot of cases, or you can stack it, let it dry and burn it. So that's what we're doing. Some of these piles are as close to the ditch proper as we could get, because there's not a lot of room and, and, you know, the landowners are farming next to there, so you don't want to pile the brush in their field. We have, with their permission, but they got to farm around it until the pile dries down and we can burn it. So typically, if it's in their way, we, it's only for a year or so and we can burn that off. The other thing is, you don't want the piles to sit too long, because if you have high water, it all goes back inside, and then it causes a lot of trouble downstream. So that's what we're doing today. We're up by McCall'sburg today, depending on this weather. By the end of the week, we're going to finish up on Grant Five. So that'll be it for drainage ditch work, for us, until we start spraying resprouts in July. So that's kind of how that goes. We've talked about moving over to more contract work, you know, contract-generated system. I think that's a good plan. You know, Tyler and I can do as much as we can, but if we can grow a contractor, and there's some out there that do some of the brush work for us, to spray some of the resprouts, I think that, that's kind of the direction we're going. So currently, he's, Tyler's looking at getting someone in to look at these projects. And so keep in mind that there's, there's contractors out that'll do logging, any construction company, but when it comes to spraying resprouts, there's not a lot of contractors in the state, like two. And last year, and they're, they're, by the way, the same ones that do the roadside brush spraying. So last year, we contacted both of them, and only one had time to do that work. And I don't know if you remember, we had four townships that they were going to do brush work in, they, they didn't quite get it done, they ran out of time too. So there is a little money in the budget, and I'm kind of skipping around a little bit, left in our contract services, because they didn't get done in the fall, in the summer. They're, they're hopefully going to come back this spring and finish up. So the gist of this full circle conversation, there's not a lot of contractors out there yet to do brush spraying. It's most, not the, probably the funnest job in the world.
I have a question there, if I might.
Yeah.
When you're spraying drainage ditches, do you have to use different chemicals than when you're spraying road sides, or, or you're using chemicals that you use around water everywhere?
So, that's a good, good question. Herbicides that you use in the right-of-way and drainage ditches are different certification than what you use in ag, okay? Whole, whole different world. So roadside herbicides can work in drainage districts or in drainage ditches, but in general, Linda, any herbicide that you're going to use, whether it's in a drainage ditch or next to a wetland, has to be certified for aquatic use. And there's only a couple. So yes, there is a very special herbicide, which we use. It has to be certified, registered for use adjacent to water. That answer your question? So you've heard me, I'm going to kind of move on, any questions on the drainage ditch stuff? We're kind of good with that? We're on hold until the spring or the summer? You've heard about the no-spray program? I just need to sit down and get a letter drafted, and then we need to send it out to those people that have notified us about their concerns of herbicide. And by the way, I typed it up, a sensitive crop farmers, but it's just not sensitive crop farmers, it could be anybody. Could be anybody who owns land in Story County who's concerned about herbicide. You don't have to be a producer, so. I just need to pull the trigger on that before it gets too busy and get people to come in and sign up. Tyler let me know that he's been busy, you know, he's the new, he's the safety chair.
Oh.
Four-story county conservation, used to be me. So he took over. I only did it for like twenty-two years, I think it was time to go. And we're working with Todd, that proverbial term, JSA. And so we have some unique job tasks. Loading the hydrocedar is something that you just don't find, you can't copy and paste that one, you got to kind of start from scratch, so. We're getting that done. I don't know if Todd's here or not.
No, he's not.
Any questions on the JSAs?
Yes. Well, actually not on the JSA, but can, can you explain to me, now that Tyler is the chair of the Safety Committee, and that's the chair of the Safety Committee, four-story county conservation, correct?
Correct.
Okay. But is Tyler also going to the meetings for the county-wide Safety Committee?
You know, that's a good question, Loris, because I saw, there's Russ DeWall.
Okay, right.
And so when we had the changing of the garden, the garden, the guard, Russ was brought in to do that task. So I can provide some feedback for that.
So here's my concern, is that what's happening at the county-wide Safety Committee, the information, it may not necessarily always get transferred or will get a, kind of a readjustment of what's going to the Story County Conservation Committee. So whatever you guys want to organize, as long as there's follow-through and carry-through, I think, you know, I mean, that, just making sure that what's happening at the full Safety Committee for the county is also being carried forward and vice versa.
So is Russ on the Conservation Safety Committee?
Yeah.
So maybe he and Tyler just need to coordinate on that.
I will talk to Tyler about that and see how, see how, you know, he feels how the communication is. For me, it worked, for me, it worked better being the chair of Story County Conservation and also attending the county-wide meetings, because, you know, but hopefully it's working for those guys.
Well, for them and also for making sure that it's working for the state, the bigger, the county-wide Safety Committee too, that way.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So yeah, I'll touch base with Tyler. So I'm going to keep moving quick, as quick as I can and not get, you know, see something shiny. I wanted to throw the drill maintenance and repair in there, because CR, you know, we have, we have a new farm bill, CRP, the Conservation Reserve Program signup is going, and we like that, it's good for us, we want to buffer our streams and creeks, and we have support from you guys, from the Board of Supervisors and Conservation Board. We have all the seeding equipment, we like to rent out, we just need to get it in the shop, get it up to snuff, and get ready when it's go time. So we're doing that.
Do you ever hear comments when you're talking to the people who are coming in to rent the equipment about there's not enough funding to go ahead and do pilot programs or experimental on their land? I mean, you know, that they're, I'm just asking here, we had a discussion during the budget a little bit about, you know, being able to do prairie strips and, and, you know, strips and that kind of thing, and we talked about whether there'd be some funding, soil and water is giving some money out too, should we do more to soil and water? So I'm just wondering if you're getting any feedback about?
All the time. I mean, it's, the prairie strip thing is incorporated into CRP. So, you know, and there's, not to belabor that, but there's a lot of different CRP programs. You have the pollinator, you have the filter strip, you have all this other, all these programs, and they're all cost shared at different levels. Most of our equipment rental, most of the acres that we put in that you see in my report, whether it's two-hundred a year or a thousand, that we rent out with our drills plant, are government contract plantings. There are some, maybe a, less than a third, where people do things on their own behalf. They're not really going to plant their corn or bean field with a permanent, with, with anything but corn and beans, or, you know, unless they're going to get paid to do it. But I do, we do get some waterways that are done, people want waterways.
There's a grassed waterway.
And I don't know if I'm answering your question, but in the roundabout way, most, most of our work is done through government subsidized programs, and they're always talking about how to get funding.
Okay. So it, it's an ongoing conversation, rather than a very pointed about, we need some more money from this particular, for a particular program.
And to be fair about it, it does, the farm bill changes from year to year. What's, you know, there can be a really great program, like Pollinator Habitat Program, it was there four years ago that they decided, oh my gosh, that was too popular and cost way too much money for that seed, so they don't do that anymore. So, but what, what a landowner really needs to do is go talk to the people at the, at the Farm Service Agency and, you know, look at their land and explain where it is and what issues there are, and they're very good at, you know, helping somebody find a program.
Yeah.
You know, they'll find you another program sometimes.
There's some money somewhere, where can you fit it?
It takes some work, but I think the first step is just telling people, you know, go to the FSA. Now, the, the contracts they've got right now, I think the signup date's the end of February.
I'm, I don't know.
Yeah.
Well, there's continuous signups.
There's some continuous ones, but, but what they're doing.
Some programs have a deadline.
Yeah. So I think it's just getting, getting some information out to landowners, and I'm going to start bringing some of their materials to drainage district meetings too.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, and I'll, I'll wrap up by saying, one of the reasons we got into this, you know, was we just, it was needed, you know, the, the equipment rental, and we are, we provide technical service, the county does, which helps them keep their price down. We provide equipment with, you know, which makes it easier to do. And the other thing I'd like to throw in there, there are nonprofits out there like Pheasants Forever or Ducks Unlimited, the Audubon Society, Big Blue Stem, you know, if you want to write a little note and ask for some funding, you know, there's always a little bit you can get. So there's, you know, everyone's trying to pitch in.
Thank you.
You bet. So we are getting that building extension before June, before next fiscal, so Tyler and I have a little bit of work to do. We need to build the pad up and level it and get it ready to build the building on. So that's us, we're probably going to get some help from Darren's crew or Mike's crews, everyone's going to pitch in, but that's on the, that's kind of coming off the back burner, we need to get that going, but we'll, we'll be getting that done and then the building will start. Going to kind of talk about budget, so you've already heard, we're getting this new spray truck, that's nothing new. It'll be new to us, trying to figure that system out, you know, getting, the truck is, has the GPS and a lot of bells and whistles, so the learning curve on that will be, will be fun. And the other thing too is, we're getting the sprayer with that, the GPS, and Darren, I think it's kept you in the loop, they have a new truck coming, a new plow truck, their old one, and I don't know the number on it, they were going to trade it in, but we talked, and we are going to take that over, that, the truck, it's, it's going to switch over to our inventory, since we're both out of the rule use tax dollars. We're going to take that truck, Charlie, the mechanic, will take the dump box off of it and all the plow stuff, and we'll have the truck, and we're going to put the hydrocedar on it and get rid of, get rid of Reno. Reno's been good, but nineteen ninety-six and five-hundred-and-eleven thousand miles, it's time to go. So we're excited for that.
Good use of Reno.
So we're, we're, thanks to Darren, we're going to, we'll do that swap, and we plan, I did budget money, by the way, in case we couldn't do it in-house. We will competitively bid a couple different outfits in Des Moines, that we can pull both trucks up, they can lift the hydrocedar off and put it on the other one, hook it up, get our lights on it, all the emergency lights, and get that done. Now, we can do that in-house, it's just, yeah, how much time you have, so. I kind of keep moving through some of the, the budget stuff, we did budget for new, another drill, we are going to take the old nineteen ninety-six eight-foot to the auction in the fall. We also have a yellow trailer, hand-built in nineteen sixty-eight. It's a good trailer, it's time to go to, it's going to go to the auction in the fall, DOT auction, and we're, we have budgeted money for this coming FY to, to get another trailer. Now, that may be partially funded by the Living Roadway Trust Fund. The Living Roadway Trust Fund has changed, there's a new person in charge of that, they're redoing some things, some, you know, their, their priorities on what can be funded, and I don't know what those are yet. I'm thinking a trailer's not very high priority. It might be, but I think there's other things that are necessary for other IRVM programs to succeed, and a trailer's probably not high on the list. But we're going to write the grant anyway. The other thing too is, in the new building that we're getting, we are going to just buy a pre-made cage. You've seen those, they're out, it's, you just slip it in your, a corner of your building and placard that, and that's where our herbicide's going to go. So it'll have a lock, you can't get in it, it's, it's well-ventilated, will have lights, so it passes all, all the requirements for a herbicide storage facility, and that also, I think, is grant-eligible, a part of it, we'll see, okay? Yeah.
On the building then, you're, are you still going to need space over at the fairgrounds also?
You know, I just love that building. Not everything's going to fit into that forty-by-forty shop of ours, you know, they're, so yeah, I mean, if it's available, everything we could put under a roof is just saves everyone.
So when the fair board, either when we all three So, when the Fair Board, either when we all three met with the Fair Board, or I went to, yeah, I think it was when we all three met with the Fair Board, I mentioned about you wanting maybe to put some gravel.
Yeah.
You know, they said, just go ahead and call Michelle.
Will do.
Okay? But they'd be more than open to that.
All right.
Allowing you, okay.
And we'll figure out the billing, but yeah, I think we could touch it up around there and make it nice. We've been out of there quite a bit, and it's soft now, it's a little melty, and I don't, it's not had as much traffic for years as what we've done to it, so to make it better would be good. Quickly on staffing, okay? So, we are currently interviewing for seasonal staff right now. I, our, RVM, we have two openings, two seasonal staff, and they, one could start as soon as mid-April. But most of these kids are in school, so that's probably not going to happen. They could work part-time, but typically, we start them in May, and just so you know, they can go all the way through summer, and I do have funding to keep one on full-time all the way through December. And that's typically someone who's graduated. So, we're, we're getting some staffing, and the new spray truck that we're getting, the cabover, that requires a Class D, as in dog, CDL, I mean, a chauffeur's license, is that right? Yep?
Yeah.
Yeah, Class D CDL, which Tyler and I have. I mean, I got a Class A, so it trumps that, he has a Class B. So, we can drive it, however, our seasonal staff can't, and we don't expect them to. We're not going to, you know, we'll do the driving, they can run the switches. So, we'll be with them the whole time, we'll kind of hopefully mitigate some bad things that might happen. So, we're trying to, you know, we're going to be working with the seasonal staff, so I just thought I'd let you know that. You can look through the staff affiliations, Tyler and I are active in about every little organization we have.
Can you tell us what those stand for? What does AFIR stand for?
That is the Association for Integrated Roadside Managers. Now, they'll have to change it because the I is gone, but.
That's too bad because the firm really had.
Yeah. Maybe we'll keep it. And Tyler's, that, the IWCA is the Iowa Weed Commissioners Association, and then I'm on the, I'm on that, the Grand Advisory Committee for Living Roadway Trust Fund still, and as you know, Tyler recently joined the Reef Assembly Group, which is awesome. Looking at doing some fire this spring, hopefully, we're going to start planting, get the hydrocedar done, and, you know, what was all this stuff Darren and Tyler did, and there's a lot of projects going on. So, there's going to be, you know, some seeding to do, it'll, spring's on the way, we're going to be running.
What are you going to burn? County, county property?
Weed, well, we're just going to light it up with the North Wind and let it go all the way through Story County. No.
Well.
We'll call the fire department. Are you looking at specific plantings that you're going to burn?
I, well, I typically do road sides, but I do help the other staff do their wildlife areas. We haven't sat down to prioritize.
Okay.
I always hit a couple remnant cemeteries. Amy's not around anymore, so I've got to keep that up. We want to keep our Pioneer Cemeteries good, that has some really neat vegetation on it, so we'll pick a couple of those. The Prairie Rail Trail, by the way, is one of our highest quality linear prairie remnants we have in the, in the county, so we always burn a portion of that. And then some road sides, so.
Yeah, I remember when you took me out driving around last year and we looked at that, and you, there was one place that was particularly beautiful, and you said that had been a recent burn.
Yeah. So, we have all that mapped out.
Yeah.
I can't, you know, we'll have to, we haven't really sat down and looked at room plans yet, so. I'll call you if you want to come out and join us, so. Contract brush, you've heard about that forever. That gentleman's going to come down, and, you know, we're going to bid that out here in about a month, see if we can't get two people, two, two firms to bid on contract spray, I've already mentioned that, and.
I thought you were going to try to do all the top-tier townships this year.
We've got to finish the bottom first, so the bottom four, and then we go up top.
Okay.
Okay? And that really depends on if they're going to come back in the spring and finish up and use up the money that we have to finish, you know, up what they didn't get done. So, it's kind of hard to decide what townships to bid out until they get the work done, if you see what I'm talking about. Yeah.
Cool.
All good.
You're busy.
Think about 20, did I get it done in five minutes?
Oh, I wouldn't, yeah, we'll say so.
Any other questions? Well, it's nice to come in and chat.
Thank you.
It's good to see you, Joe.
Yeah, and I really appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay. Upcoming agenda items, anything that anybody wants to make sure we get on the agendas for next week?
I'm going to put on, I forgot, did not get to it in time this week, but about the possible of funding for volunteer center, making up some of what was not included in the asset, but also to separate it out. Would like to also see, but I don't think it would be for next week's agenda, but us to have a conversation about the possibility of having the kind of program and department managers who are not reporting to us on a quarterly basis, I'm thinking of risk management and maybe outreach, to start giving us a quarterly report, just like the other departments do. So, I'd like to have that discussion.
Risk management and who?
Well, I'm thinking outreach and special projects, a quarter, maybe a quarterly report.
So, you're, you would be asking for board staff to give quarterly reports as well as department heads?
Yes, given the fact that we ask our actual department heads, and then these two positions, they are doing work that we're not always getting updated on. And so, that, yes, I mean, now, so we can discuss that, and I think we have to discuss that at the board here.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that's it for me.
You said you have.
I don't have anything.
I don't either. We'll move on then to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates.
Public forum, too.
Public forum number two, thank you. Comments from the public, items not on the agenda. Board may not take any action because of the open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Is there anybody who would like to make a comment? If so, would you go to the microphone? Okay. If not, close public forum number two, thank you. Next, liaison assignments, committee meeting updates, and announcements from the supervisors. Liz, would you like to start?
Sure. So, let me just look at my calendar here, so it's been kind of a busy week. Sorry. So, Friday, just this past Friday, I participated in the stepping up summit conference call. They are looking, they still haven't solidified a date to have that summit. They were looking at October, but October right before an election, if you want to get auditors to attend, they've been told that, very unlikely, they'd probably get an auditor to attend during that time. So, they are kind of looking at September, they were trying to piggyback on the fall ISAC conference, and there wasn't sounding like that was going to work initially. They're kind of reevaluating and see if that might be a possible option. So, hopefully, we'll have a date figured out by the next meeting. Last night, I participated in Class Three of the Board of Health Leadership Class that I'm partaking in, it's a six-course. So, last night's topic was on laws, guidelines, and regulations related to public health. Today, we have the, we have a conference board meeting tonight, and I believe we also have a work session this afternoon, a secondary roads work session this afternoon, and then the conference board meeting at 5:30 tonight. Tomorrow, I have on.
5:30, I thought the agenda said six.
I thought it said 5:30.
Okay, I'll check, we'll check.
I'll redouble check on that, yeah, because I was actually kind of looking at it myself, and there might be two different emails that I.
I have six o'clock.
You have six, but I thought I saw another thing that said from Diane that said.
And, you know, and that makes sense, but I will, yeah, so it's all coordinated afterwards.
Yep, it does to me too, except for she had sent something that said 5:30.
Leanne, who also sits on the Nevada School Board, said six o'clock is on hers also. Is, the agenda actually says six, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe they want you to come early.
Yep, I do see six on this one. I had another one that said 5:30.
Okay.
So, that's why, that's why that's the error, so I've just double-checked on that. So, 6:00 PM. Then I have on my calendar for Wednesday, there's a quarterly orientation meeting, and then we have the Grant Five Drainage District Meeting tomorrow evening. Thursday, we have the recognition for community services and veterans affairs, and then we're also doing our monthly CICS meeting this Thursday because our normal date falls with the ISAC Spring Conference, so they moved it back to this week. And then Friday, I plan on attending the Chamber's Legislative Luncheon. So, that's, so far, what's on my calendar.
Okay, Loris.
I want to make note of a meeting I attended last week, the Hunger Coalition, and I just bring back that both the Salvation Army and Bethesda Pantry Representatives were there. We did not have a microrepresentative last week. But Bethesda and Salvation Army both shared that their numbers have been very high for latter parts of January and so far in February. So, the Salvation Army ended up purchasing 6,000 pounds of food from the Iowa Food Bank last month, and they had one day with 30 visitors in one day. And Bethesda ended up purchasing $7,000 worth of foods from the Iowa Food Bank and had a one-day, 35 visitors. They were unable to put a finger on exactly what was happening right now to move up the need, but I just said I'd bring it back again to let you know. So, going to be hanging out, I guess, with most of those meetings with Lisa and Linda this week. The difference will be, I will not be able to make the Community Services and VA Recognition on Thursday morning as there's a Herta Board meeting, and given we're going to actually be discussing the changes, I kind of gave you a preview, quick preview on Thursday, I really need to attend that meeting. Thursday night, I'll be at the Community and Family Resources Meeting up in Webster City, and then, yes, Friday for the AEDC Legislative Luncheon also. So, that takes care of where I'm headed this week.
Okay. All of those meetings as well. I did attend the AEDC Board Meeting last Friday morning, and both Dustin and Brenda gave excellent presentations on the work they're doing in the rural communities, smaller communities, and the workforce, and lots of good work going on there. We, let's see. Yes, we have a work session this afternoon with the engineer, and I will also be at the Conference Board Meeting tonight, whenever it is, and probably will stay for a little bit of the council meeting afterwards. Drainage District Five, Wednesday, and Thursday, I have, we'll be at the Community Services and VA Recognition, also a Storycom meeting in the afternoon, and Prairie Rivers Board in the evening, and Friday, Chamber Legislative Luncheon. Sounds pretty much like the same thing, a couple different things. So, and next Monday, I'll be at Colo Council Meeting. So, that looks like what I've got going on. So, we'll all have a busy week.
Can I double-check? The meeting tonight is at 6:00 PM.
It's at 6:00, okay. Super. Thank you. Any other announcements, anything else for the good of the class? Okay. If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move where you adjourn.
Second.
Olson?
Aye.
Hennessy?
Aye.
Markin?
Aye.
We adjourn, thank you very much.